To the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees meeting for August 12th, 2021. It is 7:34, so we're going to go ahead and get started. And everyone, please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for EMT Jacob Dindinger, who died in the line of duty from gunshot wounds sustained in Tucson on July 29th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so first up this evening is a continuation of a public hearing from July 8th to entertain public comment on a proposed non-exclusive television franchise agreement between the village and Cablevision of Wapinners Falls, Inc., a wholly owned subsidiary of Altice, USA. So we will go out to the public for any comments on this. This has been a public hearing that's been going on, as I said, since July. Does anybody have anything that they want to say about this? I didn't think so, okay. So the hearing will need to be continued as the application is still before the Department of Public Service and can't be closed until they provide further guidance. So I'm looking for a motion to continue the hearing to the September 23rd, 2021 meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. So next up is violation hearings pursuant to property maintenance law, section 240-9C. There are no hearings scheduled for this meeting, so we'll just move on to public comment on agenda items. So we'll go row by row, as we usually do. First row, Lori, you have anything? Nope, okay. Second row, anybody? No? Third row? Matt, in the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
First of all...
Oh, wait till you get up to the podium.
First of all, you don't have authority to issue orders. They're not laws. That's not a law. You don't have authority to do that.
Okay.
But that's not why I came here. I came here tonight to talk about this pulver fill operation that he wants, and I've emailed all of you. I hope that you got my email, because last time I gave you stuff, apparently you didn't get it. Anyway, the short environmental assessment form shows 7.3 acres proposed, yet 3.6 acres are disturbed. The site plan is unclear where the fill is proposed to be dumped or the volume that's required. It appears to me to be an open-ended dumping ground to fill in a cliff. It appears to me to be at a high elevation. Dumping went on for years near the Rushmore Estates. Gary Thomasberger, the building inspector, knew it the last time. Now, I could hear the lift gate slam as they dumped each load from inside my house, one after another, after another, after another. It was allowed to go on for years. Go look at it. Go see for yourselves how much fill was put there and what kind of fill. You should remember Evans Drive dump site that went on for years because a law was written to allow dumping from outside the village. The FBI had reportedly investigated the dumping at the site. The DEC did investigate that site. Oversized tractor trailers, tractor trailers and dump trucks were staged in line up adjacent street, and they waited on line to dump. It went on daily and lasted for years, if memory serves me well. Now, that fill was from an officer remediation site in Yonkers. I was told it would look good when it was done under building inspectors oversight. Guess what? I don't think so. Dust, dirt, debris on 32 was all the time, and when it wasn't on Evans Drive for a very long time, it was not just 32, it was on Evans Drive, and it was for a long time. I believe it went on for years. Truck traffic was ridiculous under the building inspectors' supervision. The ice house dirt road is not good option for the entry and exiting of these tractor trailers for dumping. It's narrow and completely unsafe and will cause traffic problems. Dust, dirt and debris will be on Evans Drive again. Brigadoon is a better option, but it's still, it's still not safe, either for high volume tractor trailer loads. It's either way, it's not going to be a good option. Short environmental assessment form shows it will not increase traffic substantially. There's nothing to base that on. You've seen what happened. It's not, it's not believable, nor is it consistent with the natural landscape, but the form says it's, it's going to fit right into the natural landscape. I don't think it does. The short environmental form appears incorrect. Shouldn't it be forest? It looks like a forest. It's in close proximity to the town of Woodbury Forever Green area behind Skagley on Court. I'm very familiar with this. It should be on the map. It's not suburban, as listed on the form. The short environmental assessment form is unclear as to where the stormwater goes. The location map is impossible to discern where it's located. The outer boundaries of close proximity are not shown on this map. This project will definitely add substantial traffic, dirt, dust and debris. This project does not benefit Woodbury. It's detrimental to residents, as have been outlined. It cannot be supervised properly, just as the other dump site wasn't properly supervised. It was not able to be supervised. And it was Gary, it was Gary. He was incapable before to keep up with the 50 truckloads, uh, truckloads a day, and he knew it, and he even said it. He couldn't keep up with it. You don't know what they're going to bring in. Is it going to be an officer remediation site again from Yonkers? I mean, this is the history of a failure to properly keep up with who knows what they will dump. There is a history of failure to properly keep up with who knows what they will dump. I do want our new building inspector, I don't want him to deal with, this new building inspector to deal with this, nor should anyone else. It's on our dime. He's supposed to go watch these people? Get out of here. It's ridiculous. I implore you to use, you to say no for once, because you say no, you say yes to everything else.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the public at all, on agenda items only? Okay, we'll move on to administrative business. Need a motion to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held July 22nd, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Tara. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Need a motion to approve abstract number five containing vouchers 210-322 through 210-413, totaling $130,406.43.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Need a motion to accept with regrets the resignation of Robert Anzalone from the planning board effective immediately.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Now I'm looking for a motion to advertise for letters of interest for individuals interested in volunteering to serve on the planning board.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Moving right along. We need to re-leve previously exempted properties. Looking for a motion to adopt the resolution presented by the village clerk to re-leve a prorated tax amount due on properties located at various locations that were previously eligible for exemption.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jesus, can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Okay, so now we are up to the discussion on the fill permit request. Correspondence has been received from Justin Kimple, attorney for the applicant. I'm sorry, did I do that again?
The resolution for the speed reduction.
Every, every meeting I miss something. Okay, thank you. There is a resolution for a speed reduction request to New York State DOT that I'm looking for a resolution on. This is in response to the letter that I sent to the DOT requesting the speed limit reduction that we discussed a couple of meetings ago. They asked that this be put into the form of resolution, so that's what we're doing here. So can I have a motion requesting the Department of Transportation to conduct a speed limit study on Route 32, lowering the speed limit to 30 miles an hour?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Tara and Jesus for the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Thank you. Now the discussion for the fill permit request. So correspondence has been received from Justin Kimple, the attorney for the applicant, that included a revised grading plan and section of fill area with an environmental assessment form for the fill permit application. The letter states further that the application is not connected in any way to the winery application, nor is it for timber harvesting. The applicant submitted a letter stating it's to beautify his property for his family's enjoyment. He also ensured that more of the severely sloped property is usable. He does not have a specific purpose at this time for the usage of the property, other than to beautify and cultivate the native trees, plants and flowers. We don't have a full board this evening, nor is the applicant nor his attorney here, so my thoughts on this are to table this until the next meeting, until we have a full board to have a thorough discussion on this with the applicant. So that's what we'll do. So an update on the annexation petition. The public hearing that was scheduled for August 31st, 2021, on the petition of annexation submitted, has been canceled due to the fact that all four involved municipalities, and if you recall, all four municipalities had to agree on the specific date and time, that all four involved municipalities could not agree on a date. The town and village of Woodbury agreed to August 31st, whereas the village of Kiris Joel and town of Palm Tree did not. So Kelly, can you please give us an update as to how we're going to proceed with this and what we have to do next? Because this is a somewhat long and complicated process, so I'd like the attorney to explain that.
I've had conversations with the attorneys for both Palm Tree, Kiris Joel, as well as the town of Woodbury. The next steps are to proceed through SEACRA. We are still considering scheduling a joint public hearing, but we need to move forward on SEACRA first. If you recall, this board declared its intent to serve as lead agency. That went out. We did receive an environmental assessment form just today to follow up on that, so we will resend that, even though it's already been sent, but just so that it's clear that you still are declaring your intent to serve as lead agency. We have to work through that because it is likely that somebody else will object to this board serving as lead agency. If that happens, then it goes to the DEC to decide who serves as lead agency. But I'd like to get through that process before we schedule the joint public hearing, but the, the four attorneys are working with their respective boards to try and come up with a date and location that works for everybody.
Thank you, Kelly. So, you know, just for everyone's information, I, I think we all believed that that probably wouldn't happen on the 31st, but we really wanted to kickstart that process and get the ball rolling, because it is a long process. All right, anything else, Kelly, on that? Okay, thank you. All right, so now we have acceptance of bids for the fiscal year 2020 OCCD grant for hydrant replacement. Attorney Norton had recused herself on this matter due to a conflict, and attorney Brian Nugent handled the issue on behalf of the village. So Desiree is going to talk about the bid opening now. Oh, do you need it?
Go on to the microphone.
Oh, you need the microphone?
Yes, thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. The bid opening was held on August 4th at 2:00 PM, and the notice for the bid was published in the Times Herald Record on July 3rd. We received two bids. Nanini and Callahan Excavating, Inc., they bid $59,399.97. That's an amended amount due to a defect. And Boyce Excavating Company, Inc., bid $84,850 even. The bids have been reviewed for legal sufficiency by attorney Brian Nugent, and he has opined that the defect should be waived. Engineer Barber has noted that the work is through the Orange County Community Development Grant Program fiscal year 2020, which the Villas was awarded a $50,000 grant to do for it. The department has recently sent correspondence advising that additional funding, up to $125,000, is available to cover costs for this project. So additional hydrants may be being done as part of it after superintendent Phillips identifies whether there are any available that are in low to moderate income areas.
Thank you, Desiree. So with that said, I'm looking for a motion to award the bid to Nanini and Callahan for the replacement of hydrants that cost $59,399.97.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andrew. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. All right, now I'd like for us to hold a work session with the building inspectors, attorney Norton and planning board chairman Gerver, to discuss the recently adopted ARB law earlier this year and some interpretation issues that are persisting. Since this law has been passed, there's been some interpretation inconsistencies and confusion on what the legislative intent of the law actually is, and we have talked about this in the past. But we do need to clarify a few points of the law. So since the annexation public hearing has been canceled, I'm suggesting the workshop be held in its place, since we've all already said that we have availability that day on August 31st, 2021, at 7:30 PM. So I'm looking for a motion to schedule a work session meeting to be held on August 31st, 2021, at 7:30 PM here in Village Hall.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andrew. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jesus. Any discussion? Comments? Good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. New business. We're going to introduce local law 10, no parking at 2:30 Scunamunk Road. So I'm looking for a motion to introduce introductory local law 10 of 2021, which would amend chapter 227, parking prohibited, of the village code restricting parking along a portion of Scunamunk Road.
Can you, 7 or 7:30 for that meeting?
I didn't hear you.
7 or 7:30.
Because I can't...
That was at 7:30.
7:30, okay.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Tara.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Now I'm looking for a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on September 9th, 2021, to entertain public comment on introductory local law 10 of 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. I'm set. Thank you, Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. Now we need a discussion for RFP for property maintenance law enforcement. So I'm looking, I'm looking for a motion to authorize Clerk Popfin to advertise for general mowing and lawn yard services in connection with the enforcement of the property maintenance code provisions that we passed earlier this year.
I'll make the motion.
Tara?
And I'll second.
Thank you, Jesus. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now vote aye. And as predicted by trustee Jacomaza, that does, no...
Don't say that word.
I didn't say the key word. I wasn't going to say it. He did. I wasn't going to say it. That concludes our regular business, so now we'll go out to the public for comment. So again, first row, Lori?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you in person. I wanted to give you a short update from the last email in regards to the sewer system and also the monitors. Apparently, the bid is supposed to come in within the next two weeks. They sent out a new bid. I have to get confirmation of that. I haven't had confirmation yet from Mr. Broby. As, I'm pleased to see everybody wearing masks. A few hours ago, the county executive and the commissioner of health for Orange County is strongly advising everybody to once again wear masks indoors. They're recommending it and advising it. It is not an order at this point, but we have had a significant increase of COVID-19 cases within the county over the last month or so. So I just want to ask everybody to please wear your masks indoors. I know a lot of us are vaccinated, and, you know, some people get frustrated by it, but then there's people who are not vaccinated or, for health reasons, cannot get vaccinated. So let's all chip in and do our part to try and eradicate this virus. I wanted to see if you had any questions for me.
I do not. Thank you for the update on the sewer system. I also had talked to Pete Toohey about that as well, so we've been getting some good information, so thank you for that.
Yep. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone in the second row? Anyone in the third row? Yes, ma'am.
I actually just wanted to say that Andrew is quite the trooper. We did kickball for a clause on Sunday morning, and it was for the food pantry, it was for the animal shelter, the Woodbury Ambulance, and the gatehouse, and we really had a really good time. I think they raised about $1,000, which was awesome. I wanted to speak about the masks.
Excuse me, before you go any further, could you just identify yourself for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jennifer Guardjul. I always forget that.
It's okay.
I do forget that.
Please continue.
I feel that I'm, my reputation precedes me. Anyway, in, in terms of the masks, I am going to different villages and town boards to say, listen, it's a very, very acrimonious situation, and we're speaking about our, our school boards, and they've really been taxed in this situation. And I just always ask if we can just be kind. There are community members, there are family members. If these school board members last, I will be quite surprised. I mean, we just have, there is no right answer, you know? It's, we have to work together as a community, as all communities, as Orange County as a unit. Lori is very, very staunch in that, you know? She has explained that the legislature is really, you know, pushing for vaccinations and, you know, wearing our masks. It's important. Just be kind to each other, please. Thank you.
Thanks very much. In the back, oh, wait, excuse me, somebody in the second row. We'll keep going in order, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Monica Mitchell, Ridge Road, Hyland Mills.
I'm sorry, my name is...
I got this notice for a variance...
Excuse me, excuse me, we couldn't hear you. Could you step a little closer?
I got this notice for a variance...
Start at the beginning and let us know who you are.
Of Hirsch Fisher.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. You're fine.
The subdivision? What's going on with that?
I'm not familiar with what you're, this is talking about.
Supposed to be tonight.
I think that was last night, ma'am.
This is the village board. That was the zoning board of appeals.
That was an application.
That was an application that was on last night's zoning board of appeals meeting. The application, the board did decide to adjourn the public hearing to get more information. And that will next be held on September 8th at 7:30 here, if we're still doing in-person meetings.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Matt, go ahead.
So Matt Higgins from Hyland Mills. And like I said before, Tim, you can issue an order, it doesn't have any legal weight. And I would appreciate it if you didn't try to pass a law to have some kind of mask thing, because everybody's sick and tired of it. I'm sick and tired of it. Everybody's sick and tired of it.
Excuse me, Matt, I'm going to ask you to treat us with respect, just as we treat you with respect, okay?
What? Because I'm loud?
When you yell at us, it's disrespectful.
Well, I'll shut the mic off. How do you shut it off? I'm loud.
Leave the microphone alone, please.
I'm going to shut it off. This way, this room echoes. I'm sorry, my voice carries. Is it still on? That's the way I talk.
Please continue.
So the reality is, this is all about fear, and it's being peddled constantly, 24/7, seven days a week, all the time. Wear a mask, stand on the dock, get a shot. That's all I hear. I don't want to hear this board tell me to get a vaccine or tell everybody. You know what? I see it on TV all the time. Every time I put on the internet, a thing comes up. Oh, disclaimer, COVID-19, blah, blah, blah. You know what? People have had it with this. They don't want to wear a mask. And, and they're being, their civil rights are being crapped on by, by this vaccine passport. In this village, if you want to pass a law, you should pass a law where you won't accept a vaccine passport in this village. That's what you should do. You should pass a law for freedom, instead of all of these other laws, which I've, I don't want any part of this. You're just wasting money. You could do something. You could leave it to choice for all the businesses around here to not wear a mask. People are being discriminated on, and businesses are going down the tubes thanks to this, and it's a repeat. You're watching the same thing go all over again, and I was ahead of my time. Look at this mask. You know what it says? Delta. I got this two years ago. This is where it's going. Listen to me. I, I looked at the reports from the Health Department of England, okay? It's there, there's data there. You can check it. There's more people dying from, with the vaccine, twice as many, as people that are unvaccinated. Look it up, from the Delta variant. I checked. It was, it was, it's been that way for the last two weeks. It's not a vaccine versus unvaccinated, it doesn't matter. Everybody's going to catch it. Don't have fear. People shouldn't be so afraid. Let their kids go to school. It's child abuse for these children to have to wear a mask all day. It's bad for their brain cells, and it's bad for their whole entire humanity. It's no good. And listen, I, I get direct information. You guys got people that work in an ER? I get a, I get a message on my phone every night from somebody who works in an ER, and you know what? At the height of this pandemic, you know what? He wasn't wearing a mask. At the height of it, he was hugging COVID patients. He was taking bodies out the back. He didn't wear a mask. He got in trouble over and over again about it. But he's like me, he doesn't believe in this. You're going to get it or you're not. This vaccine doesn't mean a damn thing, and that's the way it is right now. He texts me. It's the old people, from the old folks home. It's the same story over again. They're not dying. There's hardly anybody dying. There's one person on the bench at this, at this hospital in North Jersey. We're being played. He knows, he sees it, and, and the nurses know, because it's attacking the vaccinated people, and it's going after the, the weak spot on the people that are vaccinated, and that's what's happening right now. That's the reality of this whole thing. So why wear a mask? You shouldn't have to. It's ridiculous.
Okay.
It does no one any good, and if I'm loud, I shut the thing off. I'm loud. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Well, anyone else in the public have anything to say before we move on? Okay, so we'll go out to board member comment, and I'll start. So as Lori pointed out, COVID cases in the region have been climbing again. As a precaution, in the interest of safety, public health and courtesy, on Monday, we reinstituted a mask mandate in village buildings. Orange County is second only to Westchester in the number of new cases in recent weeks. This pandemic is not over, but through diligent behavior on all of our parts, we can get through this with a minimum of disruption, as long as we continue to follow simple guidelines like getting vaccinated, using masks, washing your hands and social distancing, and just practicing a little common courtesy. Somebody else, you said be kind. Somebody else, you said be kind. That's all we have to do. That's all I have to say on that. Our water supply continues to remain stable. I'm in constant communication with Mickey, our water superintendent. The tanks are remaining full and our wells are keeping up with demand. Our engineers, hydrogeologists, and water department continue to work toward improving the supply side of things. So I'll continue to update as new, new information develops. That's all I have for this evening, so thank you for joining us and have a good weekend. Let's go down to trustee Gomez.
Thank you all for coming out. I wish everyone, make sure you hydrate in this heat. You have the heat wave coming. And also check on your aldeens, your neighbors, you know, people that have whatever efficiencies that need help, please look out for them. Be kind to your neighbors and they should be kind to you. And get vaccinated if you choose to, don't, but the choice is up to you. But your choice shouldn't have to affect mine like mine shouldn't affect yours. If you're all kind to each other, hopefully you can speak about it in a civil way and everyone can get along and understand each other's point of view. Stay cool and have a great night.
Thank you Jesus. Trustee Burek?
I gotta take a quick drink.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you. Thank you everyone for coming tonight and watching. I know that some of us are in denial that summer is winding down and the new school year is almost upon us. This, I've said this before, this is one of my favorite times of years, even if it is a strange time. I just love back to school shopping, but this seems to be a lot more anxiety this year with our kids returning to school, even more so than last year. Just a few months ago, it seems like we were on our way to returning to some sense of normalcy, but here we are a few weeks away from school starting and it seems like we're taking ginormous steps backwards, if that's even a word. I know there is a lot of uncertainty around what the school year will look like, but I think we all just have to have a little bit of faith in our school districts that they're not going to put our children in harms way. Last year was unprecedented and somehow our kids persevered. I have to believe that the same will be true this year. I am grateful to live in a district with extraordinary personnel who have shown that they will always put the well-being of our kids above all else. They try to make their school experience as normal as possible in a world where nothing as of late is normal. I have been once again trying to prepare my children for what's to come as best as I can based on the limited information that is available. And I know a lot of parents out there are very eager for guidance to come from districts. I just encourage you all to be patient. While none of this situation is ideal and all of it is scary, I have to believe that everything that's going on behind the scenes right now is with the health, safety, and mental well-being of our children at heart. So until then, I think we all again should be patient and understanding because the job of the school administrators, administrators right now that are tasked with is nearly impossible with guidance that seems to be changing almost daily. So to Jennifer's point, patience and kindness towards all and tolerance is key. So thank you all again, everyone. Please be safe.
Thank you Tara.